Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening in the Beverly Middle School Library. Today is Thursday, May 22nd, 2025. Time is 7:07 PM. Calling to order, the Committee of the Whole. We have a very limited agenda this evening, and I'll just make a note that the third item will be skipped this evening. So we really have the call to order, the pledge of allegiance, and then our FY26 budget discussion and decision. I will let you know that we are streaming via BevCam's YouTube channel. We are also being broadcast on BevCam Channel 6 and their high-definition channel 1073. Thank you so much, BevCam, for providing that service. The rest of the members are in person this evening. I will call the role. Regrettably, there is a conflict with Express Yourself this evening, so Ms. Quelo is not able to join us. In person, we are joined by Dr. Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Dr. Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Here.
Ms. Karen Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Lorinda Visnick.
Here.
Mayor Michael Cahill.
Here.
And I'm Rachel Abel. We are also joined in person this evening by Ms. Bethany Splansky, Ms. Erin Brown, Ms. Lisa Oliver, Ms. Gabrielle Montivecki, Dr. Suzanne Chirocek, Emma Puglisi, and joining us online is Dr. Dorothy Flaherty. We're also joined by members of the public. We appreciate your participation in this process. Without further ado, I would like to ask the birthday girl, Ms. Lorinda Visnick, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for letting me put you on the spot, Ms. Visnick. Appreciate that. As I stated at the outset, we have a limited discussion this evening. It is related to the FY26 budget. It is our intention to have discussion and a decision this evening. When we left off at our last meeting last week, we each took responsibility to think of questions that we had, to request additional information that we would need to come to our decision this evening. And with that, I would like to ask if there's any member that would like to start our discussion this evening. Ms. Visnick, I see you.
I'm happy to do that. Thank you, Ms. Abel. I sent a number of questions to the administrative team. I want to ramble a little bit, and then I'll try to jump into my first question, and then I'll try to take a break to allow other people to ask questions. If that is all right with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I brought forward this evening a couple of prepared comments, as well as some questions for the administration, which I hope this body will help us continue to be thoughtful in our discussions around the budget. First and foremost, I wish to express my gratitude to those who have taken the time to write and who spoke at the podium. I often urge people to come forward, and when they do, I think we should not only acknowledge it, but appreciate it, and maybe even celebrate it. Our democracy depends on involvement. Next, on the topic of an override, I wish to make it very clear, any citizen can begin the override process. It is a citizen petition. Based on several emails, there seems to be a misunderstanding that the override effort needs to come out of our body, and that is simply not true. There's no need for any one of us, let alone all of us as a whole, to take any kind of vote or any kind of motion for any particular citizen to move forward with an override petition. Next, simply from a bookkeeping point of view, there is money in this budget for an elementary strings teacher. There was money in the budget for that position this year. So from a clarification point of view, that money is currently sitting there. Also, another misconception is that the current seventh graders who are in German will not be allowed to continue their pathway through, and in fact, that also is not true. Our current seventh graders will continue to have German class as eighth graders next year. I feel very strongly, based on emails and comments and some calls, that those two items are misunderstood, so I wanted to clarify that. And the last overarching item I want to kind of speak to before I go to my questions, Dr. Chirocek, has to do with maybe a longer view, a wider view of -- I've been sitting in this chair a decent amount of time, and I've had children in the district even longer. So our district, over many years, has seen several elementary, local elementary schools close. You know, we no longer have the Washington Beetle or the Edwards School, the Farms Elementary School, the McKay, which was replaced by McEwen, only had McEwen modified to be our preschool and the administrative offices. We've seen one of our two middle schools close. We had positions long ago, the Director of Fine Arts and other director positions like that, that during tough years have had to go. And each time, to the city's credit, we've tried to build back stronger. And I just really want to, again, celebrate, just like celebrating the people who are being involved and coming to the podium. Despite all of that, we have managed to hold on to a very rich offering of options, both in the classrooms and after school. And lest anyone forget, we stand on the shoulders of giants, who for many years advocated to eliminate the kindergarten fee. I personally felt that was our largest fee by far, and it really negatively impacted certain individuals more than others. And eventually, we did manage to eliminate that kindergarten fee. So there are things that I think we tend to forget, and I just want to bring some of our attention back to that. So my first question, that brings me to my first question, Dr. Chirocek. Relative to those offerings, how common is it? What are our surrounding communities doing relative to middle school language and elementary strings?
Just in response, I know that was a question that was coming, and we had it on, so I do have some information that I can share with you on that. I'm going to bring up my screen. We took the opportunity to check with many of our surrounding communities to find out, you know, what the offerings were in those communities. And so here is a subset of information that we have. So this direct information that we've just collected in Salem, PBD Gloucester, North Reading, there's one language that's offered in middle school. Ipswich, Marblehead, Hamilton, Wenham, and Danvers have two. So Beverly Middle School right now offers three. The proposal is that we are phasing out German, which is our third language, and we will be down to two, Spanish and French. So that's the proposal that's in the -- that we've made going forward.
And elementary music? That was a two-part question. I'm sorry. Should I not have done?
Oh, sorry. So, no, I will say, we did not find as many communities that had elementary strings. I do know that Ipswich offers elementary strings. I was in conversation with the superintendent from Ipswich today, so that's how I know that. And I don't have as much detail around that. I do know that several of these communities do not offer strings. But we have offered strings, and, you know, at this point, it's still in the budget that we would be offering fourth-grade strings next year.
Is there another member that wishes to make a statement, offer a comment, or ask a question that perhaps was pre-prepared? Thank you. Dr. McKenzie de Franza.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you were done. Happy birthday. So it's nice to see everyone here. I appreciate the emails that have come through and the comments and concerns. I do think there's one area that we would do well to try to clarify around what we understood, I believe, in previous meetings around numbers of positions that would be, at least with this current budget, we would be able to continue those positions versus, I think, what we were hearing. And from my understanding, and just to get clarification and confirmation, anything that's outside of the budget that is a personnel decision, which is not something this body can speak to, is not what is a part of the budget discussion. So that's why I understand there might have been a discrepancy in what we understood was happening and what some of the communications have been about that I've received. So I was certainly very alarmed when it seemed like there were 20 positions going out the door, particularly around special education and for mental health support, given the situation a lot of our students were facing. But it seems like there might be a misunderstanding of positions versus personnel decisions versus attrition and all the things you've talked about. So I was hoping maybe there's a way that you can describe it in public that doesn't jeopardize any confidentiality around private decisions that are made versus ones that affect the budget.
Thank you. Yeah. So, I mean, within the workings of a school district, there are many ways. In my budget presentation, I alluded to some positions that were eliminated through attrition. Attrition would really fall under anyone who voluntarily leaves the district, either by resignation or by retirement. And we had a number of those positions that we did capitalize upon and make adjustments to and reallocate resources based upon that. There are also times when a decision is made by a building leader that the person, that a person or an individual, you know, may not be the right fit for our district, or that for common, maybe there's sometimes a common discussion that it's just not the right place for them. In Massachusetts, there's a situation called non-professional status, where folks that have not been in the district for three years, you know, they're sort of still kind of at will, if you may. And so sometimes, some personnel decisions are made based upon that, that there is a parting of the ways and, you know, that staffing is not going to be offered a new contract for the next year. Those are not included as numbers within our budget. I think that's the question that you had. Those decisions are independent of the budget process and are made independently. And we have a process throughout the year where principals meet with, you know, with the superintendent or with the assistant superintendent, have discussions. We have valuation processes. We have a lot of things that go into play for that. But those are not numbers that we would name in a budget. I hope that clarifies that for you.
Yeah, I think that there was probably, including me, a need to clarify the numbers we were seeing. The second question is really looking at a discussion on how the budget has shifted when we look at the paraprofessional community and how many folks can be funded and what might have shifted at all with any of that. So just thinking about the discussion we had about McEwen and whether there was going to be a need to make an adjustment mid-year, or whether there would be too many persons on staff at the beginning of the year. I think there was just a general concern that if there would be a need later, how would we address that in the beginning of the year, so we don't end up scrambling for that coverage and that support. So just wanted to hear more of the thinking around some of that.
Thank you. So in terms of the specific to preschool conversation that we had, we took a look, a very different way of looking at staffing for the preschool this year. We know that we have 70 students that will be enrolled at the start of the school year. We do know that we will hold screenings and that we will add staff throughout the year. We have funding set aside and resources set aside to be able to add staff should we need to. But remember, the preschool is an integrated preschool, and it's based upon some specific special education needs. So those are identified as students enter. We don't know what the needs of a student will be before they arrive here. So certainly, if there's a student that arrives that has a specific need and a paraprofessional is needed for that student, we certainly, you know, have the ability and the funding available to do that. In terms of the general staffing, we had operated on a sort of a cookie cutter basis of what the staffing would look like, and we shifted to take it and make more exception for staffing in a self-contained program versus the integrated program. And we feel like we can adequately add staff as we need to, as we go along, when students are added, so that we're making sure that we have the proper supports in place for our students.
Can I ask for a little bit more clarification on the preschool? Because my understanding is we also changed the hours, the number of drop-off, pickup.
We've changed that quite a few times, and I might have to refer to Bethany on some of the changes, you know, we had at one point in time. I'm going to let you talk about the, over the past perhaps four years, we've made some shifts and changes to our model, and that also makes a difference.
Correct. So we used to have a half-day model that ran morning sessions and afternoon sessions, and we had difficulty with enrollment in some of our afternoon sessions, just because of schedules of students that age. And so we switched to a two-day, three-day, five-day model. So students are there from 8:15 to 1:15, and they're either there two days, three days, or five days, depending on what their IEP calls for and what they enroll as a peer. So that shift has happened just within the past year, two years.
Thank you for reminding us.
Sure.
I'm still mulling on it a little bit. I'm trying to think about the hiring-as-needed piece, which I understand. And I'm also hearing that there seems to be a need for support in some other spaces. And I know at the building level, certainly the principals are best at deciding how to deploy staff, but I am a little worried about assuming that people will be there as needed, you know, to do the sort of, it sounds like a rolling hiring process. And just wondering whether there was a mechanism to have people in place and maybe be redeployed differently when and if they should be needed, when it sounds like maybe there are other places where there could be support. But that's, I mean, it's a building-level conversation, but I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the idea that folks will be, you know, coming in as needed, when it seems like, I would hope, we should be able to look at previous-year staffing models and see if we could do some sort of predictability around what happens, say, in December, or what typically happens in October, to see what that might look like.
So I think that is the premise of what we're doing. We have, that is what we did. We took a look at how our enrollment rolls throughout the year and when we had staff, you know, and what needs. And most of the time, the needs are associated with a student who ages into our preschool on an IEP, but we don't know what the level of need is until those students are around. So they could be, you know, turning, when they turn to nine, we begin the evaluation process. Am I saying, I don't want to misquote?
Sometimes earlier.
Sometimes earlier, but then when they age at three, at age three, they enter into a, so it could be in March, it could be in February, and we don't know what those needs would be until those students present to us. So that's part of the process. We believe right now that with one para for each one of the classrooms and four floating paras to go among the classrooms to start the year, that is, you know, it's good staffing to start out the year. And then as students are added, we'll be able to make those determinations based upon the need and what we see.
Okay. All right. I'll think about it some more, but thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Before I return to Ms. Visnick, I'm looking to the other members, if anyone had a question they wish to have addressed or make a comment.
It's like it's my birthday.
It might be your birthday.
Oh, okay. Did you raise your hand?
Ms. Visnick, you're recognized.
Okay. One of the things that we heard a decent amount, a few people at the podium, but certainly in our emails, is around the three-teacher team. My children went to Centerville School, and they had a three-teacher team. I believe other elementary schools had three-teacher teams as well. That aside, I want, I would like to hear you speak to and talk to us about the numbers relative to two-teacher teams versus three-teacher teams here, including, hopefully, whether we believe it is, I'll say, educationally sound for that age group child to be switching, like, I don't want to say switching classrooms, even though it might be the teacher who is switching. Right, yeah, I'll just leave it that.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to clarify, the idea of a three-person team is not a new idea. We have had three-person teams in the past. We currently have a three-person team in grade four at Hannah, but you're correct, in some of our elementary schools, where the cohort size is typically three sections versus four. So I think, if you remember the layout, Ayers and Cove typically had four sections of those grade levels. The other buildings typically had three, or sometimes two, sometimes four, depending on the enrollment in that building. And so it's not a model that we've not ever used. In this scenario, when we met with Ms. Oliver and when we were talking about budgeting and looking at staffing, we were aiming to mitigate class size. So we were trying to make sure that we were utilizing staff in a way where we were, again, looking at targets and areas where we could find a way to make sure that our class sizes were, you know, working within the building and within the classrooms that we have. I have a slide up here for you. So we have, in grade five, our rising enrollment is, it is 363, but 13 of those students are in self-contained programs, and they're not in the general ed classroom. So when we look at that enrollment, in grade six, the same thing, we have, I think it's 374 or 372, there's a, but the numbers are, again, 360 students are the number of students that would be projected. And again, enrollment is moves and changes. Sometimes it goes up a couple, and sometimes it goes down a couple. I think if I, at least, these are today's numbers?
Yes.
These are today's numbers. So we keep a close watch on it, and so we manage, you know, we watch where we're going. So the recommendation that we made in our budget was that we would add a three-person team, one in fifth grade and one in sixth grade. Doing that would give us 15 sections of classrooms, which is, we have typically seven two-person teams in each grade level. This year, we do have eight two-person teams in fifth grade. We looked at how we could best use staff and resourcing, and so this allowed us, with 15 sections, those students would, our class sizes would be 23.3 in grade five and 24.2 in grade six. So that was the strategy that we thought would be effective. From an educational standpoint, I do not feel like there's a loss of either equity or of instructional opportunity by having a three-person team. We've seen it work very well. We've, in particular, I've visited over at Hannah, where the three-person team is active, and you're right, Ms. Visnick, for many years, most of our fifth grades operated on three-person teams. So it's not a new concept. They split the duties. Somebody teaches math, somebody teaches ELA, someone teaches science, and they usually, for the most part, split social studies, or it's embedded into, you know, into the curriculum in different ways. That being said, it's a strategy to mitigate class size, so that was why we went to it. I thought it would be helpful for you to see what the data would look like if we looked at other ways of staffing the fifth and sixth grade. So a two-person team with 14 sections in each grade level would bring the class sizes to 25 and 25.7. That's what we were facing when we made the decision to take a look at three-person teams, because that allowed us to lower those class sizes from what is right at the edge of our target to below our target.
I just want to clarify, because you keep saying it's three-person teams.
Well, one in fifth and one in sixth. So there's only one.
There's just one.
There's just one. So, yes, so there would be six two-person teams and one three-person team in each grade level, with this setup for it to be 15 sections. The, I would be clear, the three-person team has the same opportunity for preps, the same opportunity for grade-level planning, the same, they're off at the same time as all of the other teachers. So it's just that they take 72 students and they divide it by three, instead of taking 46 or 47 students and dividing by two. So that's what that means. I also put the information up here. I know, I also heard from the teachers, I know Lisa has spent a lot of time conversing with her staff in her office over the last few days, and, you know, the desire would be, from the teacher's standpoint-- from the teacher's standpoint, to have two-person teams with 16 sections. That would require a reallocation of two FTEs from other areas. It would mean that we would have to add two more staff to the, so instead of having 30 sections, we would have, I don't, we would have 32 sections. So that, that's the math, right? We'd need two more teachers. It would bring the, the class sizes, if we were to do that, would be, a projected class size in grade five would be 21.9 or 22, we don't have a .9 student. And in, projected in grade six, what that typically means is that some classes have 21, some classes have 22. And then projected grade six would be 22.5. So again, Lisa and I looked through staffing, we looked through, you know, a lot of things. It, it would require for that, we would look to reallocate a position from somewhere else in the building, perhaps probably an interventionist or someone that, that is not in a classroom right now. And it would require us to allocate one FTE from somewhere else, whether, and, and, you know, again, I serve at the pleasure, if the committee wants me to take a look at the budget and do that, that's certainly something that I can do.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
And so if we go to the 16 sections, if we trundle down that particular path, I'll save the tougher questions for a second. Do we have two additional classrooms? Four additional classrooms?
Would be just one, actually. So it would only be one because currently there are eight two-person teams in fifth grade, so we already have the fifth grade spaces identified. It would require some movement. Lisa and I also spent some time today talking about that and saying, if we were to do this, what would that require? We have, we have availability of a half-classroom. We would have to make some movement of the other section of students that are in the other half-classroom, but Lisa's pretty confident and she's back there, but she's pretty confident that if, if in fact that's what we're doing, she would be able to make those adjustments and move folks, you know, around. Office spaces would turn in, you know, would change and that sort of thing. But yes, I believe that we could make sure that there were spaces for that.
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Visnick.
I don't want to torture the superintendent or the rest of the body to talk about how we might find that other FTE without having a sense of, I, I'm not sure procedurally what I should do next. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, save me.
Well, let me just check with Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you. I just, just a lot of questions that came off of what Ms. Visnick had to say. So in thinking about the letter that was written by 30 middle school tenured teachers, I just, I'm just curious, would, would these three-person teams, would this have happened had we not been in a budget crisis or a budget situation that we're in?
Yeah, well, there is a, there is a, this, this really is an enrollment thing, so it depends on how many students are in the cohort. So when we did it four, five years ago, it was in response to having a class size of 350 or more and so, and trying to mitigate the class sizes rather than it being, you know, budgetary. So, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a strategy for doing that, that, again, we, we have certain targets that we've set, that we aim for, that I aim for. I always look to see where I can, you know, I did not like the 25 and the 25.7, I even felt like that might be more than we needed to have in our grade five and grade six classrooms. So what could we do to mitigate those class sizes and make sure that we were, you know, more well within the targets that we typically have? And so it was a, you know, it's, it's an enrollment strategy. You know, I think it's been, it's challenging right now. I think we've been through so much in the last five years in terms of, you know, just get, looking at how we're delivering service, how we're delivering instruction. We had hybrid models, we've had, you know, we've had a lot of different changes and I do, I understand where the teachers feel like it's, it's challenging to try to think differently about what next year might look like for them. I have confidence that this model has worked well for students and so it had, it did not have an adverse effect on students and in the student learning. I just, you know, so again, I serve at the pleasure, I certainly, it's my responsibility to bring to you what I recommend for a budget that, that, you know, meets what we need to do. This was the strategy and this was the reasoning that was behind the three-person team. Both Mrs. Oliver and I felt like she had staff that were very capable of working within this model. She selected, I think, teachers that she had held in high praise, that she thought would be, you know, very easily capable of shifting their instruction a little bit in this way. So again, it's, it is what, it is what it is and I wanted to make sure you had the data that you needed in front of you so that you could see what it would entail.
Right, and I just have a few more things about the.
Is it related to three-person teams?
Yeah, oh yeah. So I just want to also know, just a few, just a few things, maybe you could just throw them all out there. So were the teachers involved in this decision? And I'm not saying that, you know, teachers want to do other people's jobs, but were they involved in this?
In the decision for the three-person team? No, I think it was a decision that was made by the building administrator, who we respect and empower to make some operational decisions like that. However, they were involved in the conversation and discussion about, you know, because she had identified which teachers that she was, would think would be good at, at doing this and she had individual conversations with each and every one of them in order to, you know, have the conversation about it. So at the, at the level of, you know, this is going to be your assignment and, you know, how do you feel about that? Yes, they were. But at the decision-making around the three-person team, that was done between Lisa and I.
Okay, so just, and I'm, I'm hearing that, you know, this worked well at the elementary schools, we're not, but like the elementary schools, that was many years ago and it, I'm thinking, you know, when fifth grade had a, there was a team, when fifth grade was in elementary school, is that what you're, that's what you're referring to mostly?
For some, there was a, one opportunity when, I think, I want to say maybe 2020, 2019, there was a third three-person team that operated at the middle school as well. I think that the, if you remember correctly, the three, I actually think, and in conversations with several of the principals, the teachers preferred the three-person team model when they were in fifth grade at the elementary schools. They found it as a good opportunity to see and, and get to know all the students and provide, you know, that dynamic. So there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of variables, but, you know, it's a model that is not unheard of. It's a model, you know, we weren't trying to change the structure of the middle school, we were utilizing it as a strategy for that mitigation.
Yeah, I just want to just highlight that that letter came, like I said, from 30 tenured educators and, you know, they're urging, they're urging, they're urging this committee to not to move forward with that, with that.
And that's their decision, you all have that opportunity to make that decision.
It was a pretty powerful message and, you know. What? It was a letter we all received. Yeah. I think the biggest thing that I took away from it was like, they said, our big decision, protect what works, preserve what matters. And.
You know, I, I will tell you that I do not believe that there's any negative outcomes for students. I do understand that it's a little more challenging for teachers and I understand their desire to kind of, you know, bring forward their, their thoughts. I think it's great, that's what we do, right? We, we love to hear from our teachers and we want to hear their feedback and it's going to be a decision that you all will make whether or not, quite honestly, it's an operational decision as to how we are staffing the schools. I think that we're in a time where we're working really hard to make decisions that work for all of our students and all, you know, and we appreciate the input from our staff, but I believe that looking at mitigating that class size was a pretty good priority for Lisa and I, and that's why we went forward with that.
I'll recognize Mayor Cahill now on this topic.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. I guess I just want to say that I have every confidence in the academic soundness of three teacher teams. I have every confidence in the academic soundness of four teacher teams and two teacher teams. I, I asked you, Dr. Trochik, about in the three-teacher team model, how does the, you know, how does the teaching get split up? And my understanding is, and please kind of help me with this, that in a three-teacher team, and by the way, we've had three-teacher teams at the middle school, we have them currently at the elementary school, but my understanding is it would likely be that each teacher would teach three sections of one subject and then they would all teach a section of the fourth subject. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza.
Right, and we had a flurry of new emails today, so I'm trying to get caught up while we're also talking about this. So there's a lot of different questions around cutting staffing in general. I think what could be helpful is if we reiterate maybe from the previous budget discussion, what are the numbers we're actually talking about in terms of positions that are being proposed? Because I think there's definitely a very wide range of what we think is happening based on the public information I'm seeing. So I know that we had this presentation before, but is there a way to do, do a little summary just so we have a better sense of what we're actually talking about today? I don't know if there's a slide up there, but.
Do you mean, other than the three-person team? The, the situation here?
Because there's, there's implications to the team that people are concerned about, but it's within a larger context of the idea that a lot of staff are being cut. And so I'm just trying to understand what numbers they are seeing and what the, just remind us again of what it is you're saying outside of the things you mentioned before, the attrition, retirement, et cetera.
So, so reductions were made across the board in different buildings at different levels. And so at the high school, if you remember, we had, there were, I think, five to six, five or six positions. That was based largely on a smaller class, freshman class moving up and that have been, having had, happened two years in a row. And so looking at the number, again, we did the same exercise, we looked at the number of sections that need to be taught. I think I had a slide at, they're sort of sprinkled in, in various ones, so I think that at the high school I can speak to, we had a slide where we showed that the number of sections of math was going to be reduced from, from 15 to 11 or, you know, because of the number of students that are going to be sitting in the seats. So that warranted a reduction, I think, of six positions?
Seven positions, 6.21 FTEs.
Six, 6.2 FTEs at the, at the high school. Again, over, all of those were through attrition, through retirements and/or vacancies that we anticipate at the start of the school year. At the middle school, I think it's a total of.
6.71.
6.71 positions. Again, some through retirement, some through vacancies that we anticipate at the end of the year. And the, each elementary school, I think, had an average of about two and a half positions that were reduced that I sat with each individual building principal and they helped determine. So I think, you know, it's a total of 29 point. 34 positions based upon reallocation. There were some that were non, non-teaching positions in central office and the preschool paraprofessional, the preschool had a good number there too. So is that, I mean, I can try to dig through and Emma will be looking to try to find a slide that will pull that up if you want. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I just think it will help to maybe sift through the distinctions we're talking about in terms of the impact on special education in particular, I think is a major concern, and wanting to see how that will be affected as well. I mean, I'm, if I could wave a wand, I would fund all the things and do all those things, but there are areas that I think are pretty critical concerns that are not necessarily driven just by enrollment, but, but are driven by safety, compliance, you know, those types of things where we can probably justify that if we have half the number of sections and certainly we could be oversubscribing when it comes to staffing, which I understand, but there are some areas where it seems like we already have a challenge. And so I'm wondering if we were to, if we were to just hone in on that area.
I do have it at the ready.
How that would affect that, yeah.
Can I just, I, I thought I would pull this one up. This was one that was specifically asked for. This is the growth of learning centers, special education teachers across the district from 2017 through 25, 26, along with the enrollment of, of students with IEPs. So we had a graph like this around mental health last week and I was specifically asked, I think, by Ms. Visnick to, could, could I depict in the same manner what, what we have done around special education teachers? So this graph just demonstrates the increase over the course of the years in the number of special education staff that we have added and it correlates down below with the enrollment of number of students that are on IEPs. And so we have increased from 20 FTEs to what we anticipate next year to be 36 FTEs. That does recognize that we had 40 FTEs this year. So it's a reduction of four, is it a reduction of four special education teachers this year in the appropriated budget? Is that helpful?
That, yeah, that was my question. I wanted to know how that staffing model would be affected specifically.
Right.
And is that also an enrollment-based judgment or is that?
And then, that is, this is, this is a, this graph depicts the number of FTEs for teachers, special education teachers, and at the bottom of the number of students that are on IEPs.
Right.
So that's not enrollment in general, that's enrollment of the number of students with IEPs.
Right. What, what I'm trying to get at is that with this particular population, enrollment is not always the best proxy for levels of support and staffing. So I'm wondering how comfortable we feel with knowing the, at least the current IEP needs and demographics of what's needed with that reduction and, and kind of how the decision is made vis a vis that reality? Because I know, the types of things we see in our IEPs will drive the kind of support and it's not necessarily about numbers of students. So just wondering about the, the process for deciding on that.
So that's a great question. So throughout the budget process, for each building, with each building principal and in conjunction with Bethany, our special ed director, we sat down, each building principal pulled the caseload of every special education teacher in their, in their building, as well as looked at their schedules and their roster and what their projected roster for next year would be, taking a look at individual schedules to make sure that, that the staffing that they were recommending at their budget, in their budgets for their building was adequate to cover the special education services. So we did that individual by individual, staff by staff, roster by roster, in every building. That's how we came up with the recommendations that we made for the number of educators for, for each individual building.
Thank you. And I just want to tack on a question that I think was raised before. Were we not facing the budget situation that we find ourselves in? Would we want to make those same kinds of decisions with regard to this particular choice around special education?
Well, that's a good question. If we had unlimited.
I know, it's a hard question.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, there are no easy decisions that we make.
Wanting to know where do we, where do we put our energies when we know that we cannot necessarily have all the things?
Right. So one of the, one of the priorities that was driven to me through my meetings with the school committee and with stakeholders was class size, to make sure that we were looking and mitigating class sizes so that we were not bumping up against 25. So that's where a good majority of the decision-making came for some of the buildings. So, you know, decisions were made that perhaps having 20 students in a classroom, in all of the classrooms versus having a third special educator in the building, that was a decision that a principal may have made, a decision might have been that, you know, in some buildings there were, so, so those decisions were made based upon the priorities, based upon the needs of the individual building. I think it's a little unfair question to say if we didn't have any money troubles, would we, would we want them? Sure, why don't we all have, you know, but we, it doesn't work that way. I want to, I want to iterate that, or reiterate that this budget was part of a planning process over the two to three years. We actually have already looked at our FY '27 budget. We met back in FY '25, we were in the midst of the negotiations that we had. We wanted to be able to come forward and provide the generous wage and benefit packages that we were, needed to do in order to settle the contract so that we could attract and retain our teachers. We put a priority on that. We knew that would have a compounding effect from year to year. It does compound from '25 to '26 and it will in '27. And so we, we made purposeful decisions about some of those things. None of these decisions are easy. If, if we could have everything, I mean, I don't even think that we can think like that because fiscally, you know, we have a responsibility, right?
That's not my question though. What I'm saying is.
That's not my question, though. What I'm saying is there are some areas in our budget that I have more concern about because I'm concerned about safety and compliance. And so my question around this is that if there's, oh, cute kids, if there's anything that, anything that we could... If there's anything we could use our time to really dig in on and try to figure out, I'm trying to figure out where those areas might be. And that's, that's what the question's based on.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Because I, if I were a fairy canan, we know, right? You could probably quote what I'm going to say, like, we should have in every building, right?
Right.
But I'm not willing to, like, you know, roll the boulder up the hill on everything. But I'm just trying to figure out if this is the one area that we don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face, sort of thing.
So are you talking about the three-person teams?
The special education funding. That's my concern, because I feel like, you know, there are a lot of other things we're talking about shifting, and I know that we have to make hard decisions. I'm just concerned about hard decisions that could yield more expense... liability concerns in the future if they're, if they're not maybe looked at in a different sort of cost structure. So there could be like actual dollars in budgets. But when you look at intangible and actual costs, is it something that we might want to reconsider how we are adjusting? And I love all the areas, and I love schools and all of that, we're saying all these things. But I'm really focusing on this because I am concerned about the fact that it is a unique kind of spending we do in special education. And it's always about what the students need, even if the enrollment numbers may be shifting. And I know it's not, it's not as easy a budget area because of that.
So to be clear, the reductions in special education, there's one special educator at the elementary school at Hannah, there's one special educator at Ayers, there's one special educator at the middle school, and one self-contained program at the high school. So I guess I'm wondering which one of... That's it. So I'm not sure what other special education. We have not reduced funding or spending, with the exception of the preschool, where we do have a different model that we looked at in terms of staffing at the preschool level. But I have been, I mean, I am comfortable, Ms. Splansky's comfortable, Ms. McKinnon's comfortable with the recommendation that we made for preschool and with a contingency plan that, you know, we have for adjusting. So I'm not really sure exactly which special education reductions that you're referring to. I mean, there is one at the middle school, there was a reduction of one learning center teacher at the middle school. But other than that, there were no special education reductions. So I know that we're hearing a lot from folks, but the actual reductions to the budget are just those positions.
Yeah, which, I mean, there's still, you know, the positions. But that's why I want the clarification, because it sounded like we were talking about elementary schools, and then we were talking about McQ, and I'm trying to make sure I know if you're saying, you know, four across the entire district. Again, not sure if that's enrollment-based or whatever kind of needs-based, if there's a clarification on that.
Yeah, the two at the elementary schools, we had a large rising fourth grade class, and there were a large number of IEPs that were in those fourth grade classrooms that are moving up. And so we know that at the middle school, they'll be absorbed through the staffing that we have up there and the model that we have, which is different, where all the students are in, you know, the same building, that the economy of scale helps us to be able to do some of that. So the two elementaries were, and again, we sat down, we looked at every roster, we looked at every student's IEP, we looked at every teacher's schedule, and the principals were confident that they could make it work with the staffing with the reduction that was proposed. At the middle school, it's a reduction, again, we have shifting enrollments and different kids with different IEPs. And Mrs. Oliver and I worked through that, and that was, we looked at schedules and the availability. And so that was a decision that was made. And at the high school, it is a, it was a program, and the program has fewer numbers in it. So that was a decision that was made.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Visnick, she had her hand up, and then we'll go back to Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. I think I want to just make a comment to my fellow committee members who are asking, would we be making these changes if it weren't for monetary constraints? From a quote-unquote "FNF" point of view, I think that we have heard fairly loudly that we should be doing a zero-based budget more often. And we don't always do a zero-based budget. And so I think that Dr. Trocheck hasn't used those words, but that's in fact what she did. So when she says, okay, I go to a principal and I say, how many people do we have? And how many, how many sections are we going to do, blah, blah, blah? That's really like, I don't care what you had in your school this year, what do we think we need next year? That is, that is the concept of a zero-based budget. Keeping everybody we had last year to carry over to this year is the exact opposite of a zero-based budget. So I just kind of want to speak to that, because again, as another example, last week I talked about what's our per pupil spending. So, you know, we had a wave of emails about, oh, we're not spending enough per pupil. And then we talk about per pupil, and then it's like, I feel like we're playing whack-a-mole based on what is the narrative being brought forward to us. So if we want to do a zero-based budget, then we're doing a zero-based budget, we commit to that. And then that's the measure that we should be using. We shouldn't be looking at, well, why are we getting rid of people? Or why are we moving, you know, shifting people around? We're doing that because the zero-based budget said that's what we should do.
Ms. Robinson, you're now recognized.
Thank you. So with the three, the idea of one three-person team, so if this is the ideal model, why wouldn't they all be three-person teams?
That would be a major shift and change. I mean, I don't think that, I don't think that, everything doesn't always have to be the same, as long as the, as long as we're doing what we need to do and meeting student need. We would have an uneven number to do a three-person team, I think, so, you know, if, if, if... So I guess, I don't really have an answer for that. I think, you know, the opportunity to mitigate the sizes and have one team do, have a three... First of all, the neighborhoods aren't set up for that, so we, the number of classrooms in each neighborhood is different. Five classrooms in a neighborhood, there's a lot of reasons. You know, again, there are a lot of operational decisions that we make. I don't think we ever considered whether we would want to shift the entire building from what they were doing. I think the question was, is there an opportunity to take one team and choose very carefully the teachers that were put on that team? And I believe that that was the strategy that was used. To be able to provide for students and to get the class sizes down a little bit. I think that's a priority that we've always had, and that was a decision that we made, so, there you go.
Well done. And, like, would there be special ed students on the three-person team as well?
That would be a decision the administration makes. They do the enrollment and assignments. And, you know, I mean, we know that not every team has, teams meet different needs. So sometimes a team is assigned and they have English language learner students on their team. Sometimes, sometimes there are special education students and there's a three-person team already because it's two teachers with a special education teacher. Again, the middle school administration makes those assignments and those decisions, and they work together to see, to make sure that the services can be provided adequately. It wouldn't preclude having special education students on that team. Certainly might even actually be advantageous in some ways, as I'm thinking about it. But, you know, again, that's a conversation. I do believe that Mrs. Oliver was very clear to the teachers that were, that were talked to having this program, that she would work with them and that they would have a lot of say in how they structured and what it looked like, and they would be able to, you know, make it work to the best of their advantage. So, you know, we try to work with the teachers and find out how that would work best. You know, the fact that we were having it was just, you know, a decision that we made, but then working with them to see how it would operate is certainly something that we would do. And I know that that was an offer that was made.
I appreciate, I appreciate you responding to that. I just, I guess my biggest concern, if we are going to have, like, we've, we've lost a couple of programs over the years, and it's just a little concerning to think about, you know, are we pushing kids into, into, into these teams, into regular classrooms before they're ready? And I, I think it's something important to just...
Which programs? I don't understand what you...
The SBI program, the...
Oh, models, okay, yeah, the model of instruction, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I understand, I was trying to figure it out.
Pushing kids too soon, only one team, it just seems, it just seems very disjointed. Who, like, and now that we're talking about this, I feel like, I feel like a lot of the community is going to reach out to us and say, I don't want my kids on this three-person team.
They could. It's unfortunate the way that it, you know, that it was sort of brought up.
I'm going to recognize Merrick Cahill now, and then Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I just want to spend a couple minutes talking about budget overall. I appreciate the conversation, and I appreciate and value all the input that we've been given and through the various media, from the public hearing to the people reaching out. There's been a bit of a drumbeat of crisis and cuts and hard times. And I think it would, it would help, I think, I hope, to talk a little bit about what we are doing in our schools and what we are doing to resource our schools in the budget year that we are just about to finish. We increased the school budget by $5.6 million very intentionally, and we did so with a plan to do so again this coming year as we put together a plan to, to as well as possible and very appropriately, build a strong contract with our educators. So that $5.6 million increase in this year's budget, about nearly $5.1 million of it being city taxpayer dollars and about, about half a million being state, that was close to an eight percent increase in our school budget. The budget, the proposed school budget that we're considering tonight, it's part of a proposed city budget I'll be bringing to the council on June 2nd, to the city council, proposes a $7.1 million increase in the coming year, which is an over nine percent increase in our school budget. It'll be made up of a $6.44 million new city increase, and we hope about another $600,000 plus in state aid, totaling $7.1 million. That's a two-year increase to our Beverly Public Schools of $12.7 million. Eleven and a half million of that coming from city taxpayers and about a million two in state aid. In the budget that I'm proposing, that's on the school side, proposed here by collectively, and that I hope to bring to the city council, the city projects to bring in $7.761 million in new revenues in FY26. Proposition two and a half increase, new growth, excise taxes, a couple of other smaller, smaller accounts in state aid. $7.761 in revenues. So we're building a budget to spend $7.761 million this coming year. The proposal for our schools, as I said, is $7.105 million for the Beverly Public Schools. We're projecting an increase of spending to our students who go to the tech of $385,000. And we projected our assessments for charter out and choice out are going to increase by about $85,000. So the projected cost for us as a community to educate our kids, Beverly kids, $7,576,000 and more. So we're going to spend $7.761 million next year as a city, if the proposed budget is approved by the city council. Of that, $7.576 million will go to the cost of educating Beverly children. That will leave $185,000 in new money for the rest of the city. This needs to be understood, because we keep hearing that all we're doing is cutting, and it's all negative. This is huge. I've called it historic, and people have challenged me on it. It is absolutely historic. This is enormous. We all are here, we all run for office, we all serve here, because we care deeply about our children and our public schools. I know that. So this needs to be understood by all of us and anybody and everybody who is trying to advocate, because that is all the money for this coming year. I just said we only have $185,000 more to spend on the city side of the budget, but the reality is that we need to spend about $2.2 million more on the city side, because we are mandated to increase our pension investments this coming year by $575,000. We need to increase our health insurance premium by 10%, which is about $675,000. Our city employees also are on contracts, and we will need to increase the money to pay their salaries by over a million. And our sanitation costs are going up modestly, $165,000 for the last year of the current five-year contract. You take all that together, that's about $2.2 million. So we can't not spend that, and yet we have so little to work with. So what are we doing? What are we proposing? What am I proposing to the city council? And you've heard this before, and it's not shocking. We had worked hard to build a road and sidewalk budget up to $2.7 million. Last year, we took a chunk of that off. We cut that to help fund the first, this year of all the contracts, school and city. This year, we're taking that $1.25 million that remains in the road and sidewalk line, and we're zeroing that out. Now, we have every intention of utilizing cash reserves to put that $2.7 million into roads and sidewalks for this coming year. We don't know that we'll be able to do that every year, because now there's not a line item, and we need to manage and work with, with reserves, because the reserves have to, they can't disappear, because they're part of our insurance against the next recession, right? So, so that's $1.25 million that we are cutting on the city side. We are, through attrition, we're trying to save about $125,000. Capital equipment, we're decreasing, so we have a line for capital equipment in the public works department. It's modest. It's $350,000. Years ago, that would buy you some vehicles and other construction equipment. It doesn't go very far now, but we're cutting that $350,000 down to $150,000. We're also cutting an additional, an additional amount because we had built a line in the police budget to buy three vehicles per year. We built it up to $180,000. We've cut that down now to zero. So we know we need police vehicles, we need them every year. That will need to come from cash reserves. And debt and other operating expenses, we're planning, we're planning to propose to the city council a $250,000 reduction in the debt line, along with another $300,000 that we've cut out of other lines in various city departments. So that's another $550,000. That's how we are going to balance the budget that puts every dollar in new money, except for $185,000, into our schools, into educating our kids. Just has to be said, this is, now, we all want to fund everything. I think there's a whole lot of greatness going on in our schools. I know. Every day of the year, we have to work to make them better. We can't fund everything. We all know that. And I think, I know that we collectively are proposing to do a great deal to help our educators and to help our kids and families get the best education they possibly can this coming year. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to recognize Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza, and then I'd like to recognize myself.
Yep, so thank you again. It probably bears repeating that I'm clear that we can't fund everything, and I appreciate Ms. Visnick's clarification for how to talk about the financial model we're making for decision-making, which is to look at need and to make the decision on what the new staffing model looks like. I'm asking a different question, because I think there's a particular population that we serve as educators and school committee members and so forth that are not specifically tied just to enrollment, and that's why I'm asking the question. It's also because we have legally obligated services as well that are not just about enrollment. So I'm not trying to be smart or unfair. I'm just trying to be clear that these other decisions sound rational and enrollment-driven, and I could wrap my mind around that. But I'm trying to understand... But I'm trying to understand when making decisions about another area, in particular special education, where, you know, we've seen a growth in the complexity of needs, we hear different kinds of communications about what may or may not be happening in the classroom. And so there was a lot of concern that I had around what caseloads might be looking like so that we can ensure that we can be compliant. And we know that these are also teachers who are often asked to be in meetings, whether they're IEP meetings or other types of meetings, and there's concerns about coverage and the right kind of coverage so that everybody can be safe, so that people can attend these meetings. There's increased numbers of, you know, just paperwork. And I appreciate everything that our district has been doing. I could see the numbers are going in the right direction in terms of support. It was really amazing to have the kind of adjustment counselor support that we've had as a district. All those things are true. And what our mayor just said is true. We are doing all sorts of backflips to make the numbers work. However, as I said throughout the fall and now, sometimes we have to work together to advocate for something we really, really think we need but can't afford, and I'm trying to see if this is that area, where it may not be a local fight, but if it's really the case that we feel like we're doing this, but we're gritting our teeth and we're wishing we didn't have to, I know it's hard to say that, but it feels like that area to me where we're like, eh, it's not great to be doing this here, but is this, is this another kind of conversation we could be having? And I know federally, things are, the sands are shifting, we don't know what's out there, but it's just one of those areas I wonder about because there is so much at stake in terms of all that we've heard already around, you know, adequate coverage, different needs, not knowing what types of things will be presented with throughout the year, and wanting to make sure we're not going to make a decision that we then have to reverse mid-year when it's harder to, you know, correct for it. And that's, again, I'm sure you've done all the things you said with the rosters and so forth, but I just worry about whether we would have to do a mid-year shift that would be really hard to do, given what we already see is happening in terms of the kind of ways that teachers are pulled in many directions to serve the different capacities they need to in this, i.e. meetings, different kinds of therapies, pullout, all of that.
Yep. So first, I appreciate the question, especially around other things, maybe we're not just talking at a local level. There are absolutely advocacy that we need to continue to have with our legislators around circuit breaker and around special education funding and around the, you know, Chapter 70 formula. There are a lot of things, I believe, the mayor just outlined that the weight of the solution right now for the Beverly schools in terms of this budget falls squarely on the shoulders of the local municipality, and it takes, it does take away from other opportunities within the municipality. I truly believe it, I am a strong advocate of, and I have been working very closely with my colleagues at MAS. I'm sure you all are working with your colleagues at MASC. There is a real need to take a look at how funding is distributed in Massachusetts and, and how it gets, gets to the cities and the different complexities of the formula that sometimes put the weight more heavily on some suburban areas than they do on other areas. There's just a lot. SOA was meant to be, you know, a correction and a panacea, and while it was a great step, and I admit, you know, we, for a small time benefited from that, and our urban communities benefited greatly, there were some unintended consequences that came of that in terms of the funding, you know, streamed, it was not continual. It was a small step towards correcting some of the funding formulas problems, but it didn't completely resolute, you know, what was happening. So I 100% do I believe that there's a need for advocacy around special education funding, around all of those things, absolutely. I will say, there are many steps that we're trying to take in the background to alleviate several things. There is a, one of the things that you talked about, about the IEP meetings and coverage, we have, Mrs. Oliver has actually put together a new schedule for the middle school that will account for two times a week where teachers will have the opportunity to go to special education meetings that will not entail coverage, it will be part of their duty block or, you know, so it will alleviate, I believe, a great amount of the draw that we have of pulling Paris to cover for teachers if they're in meetings. That's one small step that we've taken. We've taken, taken a look at a lot of other things, but the, the, and as to a pivot mid-year, we have, we will always pivot should the need come up. We would never not pivot if we needed to take a look. If we had seven children move in on IEPs that threw off the caseloads, we would have to take a look at that, and that would fall, won't be me, would have been me if I was here, but that will just fall on us and Emma. We always have, you know, an opportunity to do that. But we don't want to, what we don't want to do is anticipate problems and over, over, you know, and apply funding in areas that we're, we could use in other areas because we anticipate that we might have a problem. So that, that whole piece. Again, there's a, we, we know, we have one area that we desperately need to improve upon, and that is on, we are trying very hard with great urgency to continue to build our substitute roster of, of people who are available to come in and sub. It's particularly challenging to find substitutes at the middle and high school level. We have some substitutes that we have, we have done some things. Ms. Visnick had particularly asked me a question earlier on about, and I can, I can probably share some of that with all of you now, what we're doing around some of that. We took a look specifically at substitute pay over time. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not sharing now. I was sharing before and now I'm not.
Do you?
I, oh, I don't know, I do not know how to use this new Zoom, I'm telling you. It's problematic for me.
Should have the button back.
All right. I have it back. Great. All right. So, you know, I mean, we know, you know, Kenian, one of the things that you are talking about is a situation that we have our ability to bring in subs to cover. So first of all, special education teachers are specially licensed. They have a specific license that allows them to provide specially-designed instructions for students. So we don't have a cachet of substitutes that are licensed for special education. We certainly would love to, and if, and, you know, we can continue to advertise and try to build that up, but when a special education teacher is absent, finding someone to provide those services that, that is licensed is a real challenge. However, we have made some efforts at trying to improve our substitute in our, our work. We've increased, this is the increases in Beverly on substitute pay over time. So right now, we currently pay our substitutes $135 a day. We took a look just to check, I, this was just one of the questions that was given me, so I have the data available for us right here, right now. This is how our substitutes rates match up against our surrounding communities. Only Marblehead has the same one. I would, I would say, for those of you next year as you're meeting, if you want to raise it more and give it another shot, it certainly would be money, you know, money well spent if it's something that you could do, if you think it would attract more substitutes to our district, but this is currently the situation. And we, we did some digging into substitutes and attendance and, you know, what it is. So one of the challenges with finding substitutes is that we don't have the same number of teachers absent every day. On average, we have about 50 subs, 50 teachers across the district. On an average day, there'll be 50 teachers across the district. However, when we have a spike on a particular day, that, that number, for example, on Friday, we had 131 teachers absent. Now, that's a huge number. That was at one of our largest spikes of the year, but we have found that, you know, it, it's challenging and it's getting to the end of the year, and a lot of folks are using personal days, and, and so we have, you know, an attend, but we would never even be able to put together a roster of 131 substitute teachers to cover all of the absences that are there. So what we do is we aim to try to have, we would love to have 60 steady, consistent subs. I believe that if we could get that number, that we have 40 right now that are pretty regular on a regular basis, but if we could get that number up to 60, I feel like that would really cover the majority of the days that we have absent. Again, those are, those are all factors that enter into what's going on. But in terms of the staffing that we've built into this budget based upon the, the needs that sit in our schools, the staffing is adequate, but there, we do have a challenge in coverage for substitutes on days when, when teachers are absent. And I think the majority of the information that you've been getting is around the fact that, that there are absences that are uncovered, and that's really where the problem and the, you know, the concerns are coming from the folks that are writing to you, if I have that correct. So, you know, this is just some information that I also thought I would share. Again, opportunity to think about as you go into next year, or something that the committee wants to consider, you can try to go out again and take a look at, you know, what rates you might look at, whether that would work to bring in, you know, more folks. This is not a Beverly problem. Substitute problems are across the Commonwealth. It is just really hard to find them right now.
I had intended to call myself, but Ms. Visnick, since this data came from your question, I'll allow you to see if there was some additional questions related to this.
I want to push on that, the number on the list a little, because I think at FNF, we talked about.
Which one? This one?
No, how many we have on our list to be able to call.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that we talked about the number being larger than that.
Well, we have 80, but, but, but let me be clear, we have 80 names, and when we call them, they're not all consistent. We have 40, you know, probably 40, maybe 45 folks that we consistently have, and if you look, when we do sub, sub-coverage, we have the same subs that come in every day. But we, we have other names that are on there, but when Christina calls them, they're not available that day. Or they're only available if they, and they only wish to be assigned to the Cove Elementary School, or they only wish to be assigned, you know, to the high school. So they will, there's, that's the other, the other challenge that we take. So we do have 88 applicants who have filled out all the information that we have available, but they're not always available, you know, to do the coverage on a consistent basis.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I've been reflecting on some of the statements Ms. Visnick said at the opening of our meeting this evening and, and some of the, you know, hard facts and, and dollar signs that Mayor Cahill had offered. And also Dr. Churchack, you mentioned the compounding effect of the decisions that we make in our district and how we have to be looking, not only at this year, but looking at the years going forward, and it has me reflecting a lot on our responsibility to preserve the broad offering that Ms. Visnick reflected on. We do seem to have something for everyone at our middle and high school levels, especially with our music programs, our language programs, our fine arts, our performing arts. And I'm also pretty proud of the work that we've done to eliminate or reduce fees. I think we pretty much just have the bus fee left, and that's almost like by design to make sure people ride the buses that we're paying for. It's not a, a heavy lift, and there's lots of opportunity for scholarships for families who need that for transportation. But I, but I think this also ties into something Dr. McKenzie de Franza was speaking about, about having the resources for all students, and I, I think that I can reflect on performances where I see inclusion happening and I see opportunity happening in our district, that if we had to pull back programming to just do the academics, it would be such a detriment to our community. I love the way that our performing arts and our, sort of our specials have allowed students access to their peers in a very supportive and creative way, and I think we need to fight to preserve that by being extremely responsible and thoughtful. And I feel that of all of the budgets, this is now, I think, my 10th, I started paying attention a little bit before that, but this one has had so much thought and care, and, and I'm afraid that if we, at this table, try to tinker with it before moving it along to our city council, that we will have unintentional consequences. I appreciate the thought of, would we pivot? And Dr. Churchack, I think, very aptly answered that, of course, we will pivot for our children, like what we need to do. There are opportunities later if something unforeseen should happen with move-ins or student needs as they are assessed through the, the process of enrollments. We absolutely love our kids in this community. I, I would echo what Mayor Cahill said. I don't think any of us serve here because we don't love kids, right? Certainly find other things to do with our evenings and weekends and I, I just want us to be cognizant of what a balancing act it all is. We all wear many hats. I think nearly all of us have a high schooler, nearly all of us have a high schooler right now who has been in this district for many, many years, and we have seen all levels of school, from the pre-K right up through graduation and now off to college. And I think that we are providing opportunities for our students to be successful in the real world, whether it's the college and career readiness pathways that we have created at our high school, the opportunity to play sports, to work on leadership skills, to work on the social emotional skills that come with being part of a team. I think we provide an enormous opportunity for our students, and I, I really feel that if possible, I would like to soon have a motion to move forward the recommended budget from our superintendent. I think something that has been lost in a lot of the, the emails and questions that came to the podium is the role of the school committee, and I think it's important for us to take a step back and remember, yes, we have parent hats, and yes, we have, you know, family in the district, and we love the music, or we played soccer, or we did this or that. But when we're wearing our school committee hat, we have an obligation to our community to be responsible with the resources that are provided. We have a responsibility to our chief employee, to our administrators, that we respect and understand all of the hard work that goes into the decision-making around the operations of our school. And we have a responsibility to each of us as a committee member, and I think that this evening in particular, I think we've all been fairly respectful of each other's opinions, and I'd like to thank everyone for that. This is a really hard role to play, more so in the last five years. We've had COVID, we've had a teacher's strike, we have had a countrywide upheaval of the way that we grew up and the way that we remember school, and, and things are different from the technology perspective to just the climate in our community. It's hard. It's hard, but I think what we have in front of us is a responsible, effective budget that will preserve all the great things that we have been building together. With that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the budget for FY '26 in the amount listed in the superintendent's report. Of course, I can't find that number right now, it was 70. Do you have a slide for that, Dr. Churchack? You would have thought I would have written that part down.
Can I share the number with you?
Yes, go.
Okay. Oh, I don't have it on the screen, but it is 85,372,614, 85,372,614.
I'm, I'm making the motion, 85,372,614 for FY '26.
Second?
Second, thank you. Okay. Now we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there discussion about the recommended budget? Ms. Visnick?
I would like this committee to consider whether we want to keep one three-person team at fifth grade or add a, an additional two-person team at fifth grade, which if I heard Dr. Churchack, I only want to talk about fifth grade right now. I don't want to talk about sixth grade. So I guess I, I'll, I'll make a motion for an amendment. It's, it's not a monetary change, though, I don't think, right?
Well, it would be reallocation of resource, so it would take resources out of seventh and eighth grade and put them in fifth grade.
Can you put that slide back up?
Sure can.
Meaning I'm going to take a teacher out of seventh or eighth grade?
So would be an intervention, so, so right in one of, there is a, I mean, I'm not speaking for Lisa because quite honestly, I think I struggle with this because some of these decisions are really Lisa's decision of, as to where she wants to employ her staff and where she wants to.
She's unmuting.
Uh huh. So, so, you know, I mean, she had made a decision in her budget process to keep a math interventionist in seventh and eighth grade because math has been a focus for us in seventh and eighth grade and an area that we know that our data shows that we need to continue to do a little bit more work in. However, there's a position there, and in our conversations today, that's something that could be done. We could take the math interventionist out of the seventh and eighth grade and add it to one of the grade levels, and it would make then a two-person, an additional two-person team versus a three. Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense to me. Before I- That makes sense to me. Before I make my motion, Ms. Oliver, would you please bless us with your, maybe the trade-offs involved in doing one of those things or the other?
You are blessed. Yes, I definitely think we could do that. And I, I, my recommendation would be for the fifth grade, where that is a transition grade level that we would look at, taking the math intervention position and adding it to fifth grade, which would keep our eight teams in grade five.
And again, we have space to do that.
And that's not budgetary, that doesn't change the budget number.
Right, that's my point, right? I'm, I'm well aware of that. I wish to make a motion that we amend the configuration at the middle school to have, how many sections, what does that give me? 16 sections of fifth graders?
That's correct. So it's not a budgetary difference, it's an operational difference. And I just remind you of our obligation as a school committee, that we leave the operations to our administrators.
I understand that, but we're having this conversation, this slide is up, it absolutely goes to the budget, so.
So, yeah, so I would just say that, you know, I think that, that I'm hearing from Mrs. Oliver, that's something that she operationally agrees with. So I don't think it's an issue, but I, I think I do hear that, that, like, so that's not, the, the motion is to approve the budget for 80, whatever million, versus, you know, like, these line items that are in here, those are individual line items, right? Whether we have a math interventionist or, you know, I guess, so that's the question that, that is out, that is being asked. I mean, again, we're, we, I serve at the pleasure of the body. I've been told many times that you are my employer, and I work for you, and we serve at the pleasure. And so we certainly, you know, entertain and understand those things. So, but I just wanted to be clear that it doesn't change the dollar amount, because the position just shifts from one area. It's sort of like a transfer within the OT. We don't have to, it doesn't go from one to the other, right? That's mine.
So I'm just thinking procedurally, it doesn't change the main motion, which is to approve the district-wide budget. But while we're still in discussion, can we keep discussing? Well, we need a second for that motion, I guess.
For Lurinda's motion?
No.
We might need a second to talk about, because I don't, I'm sorry, I think it probably doesn't belong.
As an amendment.
As a part of this.
I withdraw my amendment.
Was that?
Okay, thank you.
There, I just cleaned it up.
Yeah.
Clean up all five.
So we're going to keep having discussion about the 85 million dollars.
Can, I don't want to leave that, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll put it back on the table so we can discuss it.
No, it doesn't need a motion, though. I guess, Mrs. Oliver, I'm confused, and I really want to understand. I said earlier, and I believe it to my core, that any configuration, two, three, four-person team, you can deliver an incredible educational experience to that class of students in that school year. And, and then, it isn't what you brought forward was a two-person team in, you know, in, in fifth grade, but removing a math interventionist in seventh and eighth. So I just don't, I want to understand why it didn't come forward that way, and why you feel comfortable with making this switch now. Please.
There, now I am on. Originally, my thought process was to keep the math intervention position, and to lower, as Dr. Trocheck said, was to lower the class sizes in grades five and six. Keeping the math intervention position was important to me because it's in our school improvement plan, and we were looking to support math instruction in those two grade levels. And we've been able to do that, and we have somebody in that role who's doing a fantastic job. And that has gone very well. I also understand at this time, from talking to staff, that there's a concern about the three-person teams. And I hear them loud and clear, I hear their concerns. I will also say, I think we have amazing educators that were chosen for those three-person teams, and I think they will do a great job. After listening to staff and listening to all of this, one concern that I do have is the transition coming from fourth to fifth, which is why I'm willing to make an operational move from the math intervention position to this other position.
I guess I would, thank you for that. Are we, should we feel reassured at this point with our math achievement at grade seven and eight? And that, that we would all, we should all feel better about a two-person fifth-grade team? Or should we all feel better about that math interventionist staying in place for next year?
The truth is that our math has been a focus for us for a couple of years, in that that support, I am anticipating that that support will show this upcoming year, hopefully, in our MCAS scores.
There were some interruptions to instruction this year, so.
There were interruptions, one or two interruptions that might be in the way of that. But it's, like you said, we can't have everything. And so I'm trying to make the best decision based on what I'm hearing from teachers in the building, and what I see for myself as the leader in that particular building. Again, originally, my thought was to keep the math intervention because I was looking at instruction, and I believe that the fifth and sixth grade teachers that I chose to be on three-person team are strong, and they will do a great job. In the ideal world, if I could have everything, I would have two-person teams and the math intervention. And I, and I realize that, that isn't an option right now. Dr. McKenzie de Franza.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Oliver. I think that maybe what I was wondering and hoping to hear was someone say, I wish I could have done this, but I'm making this choice, because it helps us to understand how you're setting priorities. So it's not a judgment on having to make the choice, but it's helpful to know what's really something that you think would benefit students and why, and to be able to just make sense of it, right? Because we can't do everything. And I appreciate that you've been taking into account feedback. And I think this exercise is really what we're trying to do. And so, you know, we've been clarifying and talking about what our roles are, school committee members. And one of the things that we know is true is that we do in fact rely on our superintendent and our district team to keep us just apprised of operationally how it's going and what's happening. So we really don't go in the building and look at classrooms and, you know, see various things, because that's not really our role. And so this is the only means by which we can ask some of those operation, operational questions, or questions around how decisions were made. And it's not in any way meant to be disparaging of the fact that a decision came forward, or a recommendation came forward. We don't have any other way to make sense of what we may be hearing from constituents, what we may be thinking we've experienced, and what we're hearing to be able to make hard decisions. So at least, I hope that's how it's being understood, because there is the piece about being, you know, respectful of everyone's role and appreciating the hard work, but this is the only way we can ask questions, understand decisions. And so I don't know if it makes sense for Ms. Blansky to answer this question or not, but I'm thinking about when we, we looked at things like the rosters and different things for the decisions around special education, you know, I, I wonder what that means in terms of caseloads, and how comfortable we feel about what will then be left for those who remain in their positions, and how that will be reallocated. So that's something I'm wondering, knowing it is a building-level operational question, but it feeds into how comfortable I feel with a budget that's going to make those kind of shifts.
So I think what you're talking about is caseload versus workload. You know, so one student is not the same as another student, and the services can look different. And so when we looked at the services that are being provided in every building, we looked at the workload, so to speak, that's associated with that caseload. We also looked at the caseload numbers themselves, and we did have pockets where caseload numbers were very, very low, because of the fact that we were able to add positions through ester funding that were maybe nice to have, but not required to meet the needs of the students within the building. So I think that this is sort of an adjustment back to baseline in a lot of ways, to where we were in terms of caseload numbers and all of that. So I think we did look at the workload versus caseload, and, and looked at the actual grids to make sure that we would be in compliance with the required services and all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Visnick, you're now recognized.
I think, I would like you, Dr. Trocheck, to put back up the slides around, not the subpay slide, but the, you maybe had a different one, because I think, like Dr. McKenzie de Franza, maybe one more. I have concerns about, right, we, we heard at the podium, and we've had a decent number of emails around what I will maybe call, you spoke to it earlier, a spike, ooh, sorry. If we normally expect, did you say 50? Yeah, the average daily need is 50 people. And if we are, if we have a list that is approximately 50, or maybe a little bigger than 50 with some asterisks there, and we're paying a good rate, I wish one of those things weren't true, because then I could say, okay, here's how I fix this problem. I get more people on the list, I pay more money to attract more people to my list. But what I think is happening, and I, and I want to talk for at least a minute about how we, as a district, might be able to try to address it, is on the days that we're above 50, when we're more than double that many absences, how on God's green earth can we possibly deal with that? Because it is in those situations that we have to pull. We cannot leave 50 or 60 classrooms absent. We have to pull somebody from somewhere to, to cover, right? I mean, and so, I, I don't know what the right answer is. Like I said, I wish there were a different problem, because I know how to solve a different problem. I know how to say to this group, we need to pay more money for subs, and we've done that twice recently. So what else can be done? Do we have any sense of why we're having spikes? Or how do we prevent those spikes? Because that is a negative effect on all our children, and I have to imagine on the staff as well. And so really, if we think about root, well, what I think about in my computer nerd self, is what is my root cause? What is my root cause analysis? How do I not have a spike of, I don't remember the number, I think you said 131, 131 staff were out of the buildings the other day. I, goodness gracious, I don't know how to solve that, or how to even begin to solve that, and whether that has any con, any space in this conversation relative to what do we do for a budget to try to counteract that?
So I think there's a lot of factors that enter into, you know, some of it. I mean, this has been a very challenging year, and a very different year from other years. I'm hoping that, you know, things will somewhat even out in terms of that. This particular day was a Friday. It followed a week where we had six days. So, so, you know, I think there were, there were 40 personal days that were taken on that day, 40 staff members that took personal days. So those are, you know, contractually, teachers have the, you know, ability and opportunity to do that. I think that, you know, we just have to, sort of, I know that at the middle school and at the high school, they have, they work diligently. And, and to, to their credit, also, the teachers step up and help out when we have a situation like that. So I know that, I saw all calls through the day, all call being an email saying, can anybody help us out? We need to, you know, we have a little problem here. And the teachers were great, and they responded, and they helped each other out. I think, you know, I, I do believe that we need to build our daily substitutes, folks that come on a regular basis, up to a number of at least 60. I think we're going to just have to endure some of the spikes, but hopefully they'll level out over the time. I think we added an additional personal day in the contract this year. It came late. I think a lot of folks feel like they want to use their personal day before the end of the year, and we're running close up to the end of the year, so that's something that, that, you know, we're up against. So, you know, I, I don't have a specific answer. I do believe that, that strengthening the number of daily substitutes that we can get to come on a regular basis is important. I think, you know, even, you know, building, maybe even building up the number of folks that who, who maybe don't want to commit to every day, but will commit, you know, to, to being on our sublist. I think, looking specifically for folks that are willing to go to the middle school and the high school, we have lots of people who are elementary-only in our sublist. They'll say, I really only want substitute at the elementary level. So I do think it's a matter of taking a really close look at, you know, how we, how we do it. We advertise nonstop for substitutes. We took billboards out one year for substitutes. That was a little expensive and didn't yield, it didn't yield quite the, the amount that we had hoped that it would. But I think we work, you know, I think that, that's just the goal. I, I also truly believe that another thing that impacts our, our coverage, we, we have teachers who take partial days or fractions of a day. And in a way, that's good, because they're with their kids for the three-quarters of the day that they can be there, but then they leave at 1:00 because they have an appointment or something like that. That's really challenging, because you don't get a daily sub in for that, but you have to find someone to cover those sections. And I actually have had that conversation with Andrea, and, you know, like, it's a, it's a good thing, and it's, it kind of puts us in a hole when it comes to substitute coverage. So that's challenging as well. So I, you know, I think we, we've looked at a lot of different ways. We have one thing that's working at the high schools, we have two, two full-time subs at the high school. But again, two subs isn't going to fix a spike, it's not going to fix when we have a large number of people out. So we are constantly looking at it, constantly working at it. And, you know, I know, we welcome any opportunity that we can to build that substitute lineup. I think there are some days that it's just, you're just going to have to weather the storm in terms of that. And hopefully, it's not so frequent that, you know, that there's a, a challenge to that. But we also do have, you know, I mean, it, it's kind of incumbent, sometimes on a special education teacher, if they're absent, if they have some service delivery that was missed, they would need, they typically will, you know, scramble around and take two groups together, want the next day to kind of make up their services or something like that. So, I mean, I also believe that the schedule that we are going to transition to in September at the middle school, we have an opportunity there to really reduce the, the amount of coverage that we need for meetings, gives special education teachers and regular teachers opportunity to be able to schedule meetings during times when we won't need to cover. It would be part of their duty block. So we're, we're working really hard at several different ways of looking at it. But it is a, you know, it's a challenge, it's a challenge that all the districts around us are facing, and one that, you know, we're going to continue to work on as we go forward.
Thank you. Are there any more comments or questions? We have a motion on the table to approve the recommended budget of 85,372,614 for FY '26. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. So I appreciate what you're, what you passionately shared with us, Mayor Cahill. Is it possible that, even though this is historically a huge budget, is it possible that it's just not enough to meet the needs of the students in Beverly this year?
If you're asking me a direct question, I'd say, no, this is an incredibly strong budget that's going to deliver an outstanding educational experience across the district. You know, does it, does it fund every position? No. But, you know, it's, and, and it's not just these two years. We have built our budget, our school budget, from $48 million to $85.5 million over 12 years. What is, what is real as well, is, and, and you've heard me say this, too, what is real as well, is that before the two recessions earlier this century, state aid made up 22% of our local budget, city and school all told. Today, it makes up 14. So the state has not been delivering for Beverly, the state hasn't been delivering for, how many minimum aid communities are there, 232? I mean, you know, this is across the board. So Chapter 70 isn't what it needs to be, and very specifically, the, the state's support for meeting the needs of special education students and programs is not where it needs to be. I'm not trying to deflect on you, you know, I mean, I agree with you that we're not funding everything, but I, but I do think that this is. this is an incredibly strong budget, and I think it's going to lead to an outstanding school year. Thanks for asking.
Not seeing any other hands. We are all in person this evening. Are we ready to call the vote? All those in favor for the main motion, which is to approve an FY budget, FY '26 budget for $85,372,614, as recommended by Dr. Trocheck? All in favor? I count four. And those that are opposed? Two. The motion has passed. As I said at the beginning of the session, we had a third agenda item for an executive session, which we will not need this evening. I will plan to put it on our next committee of the whole meeting, which, as a reminder, is next Wednesday at 7:30 PM. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Biznick.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. All those in favor? Six-zero. The time is 8:51. I appreciate Bev Cam for sticking with us and making us available. To those at home who are hiding from this rain and wind, I wish you all really good luck running across the parking lot this evening. And if members of the leadership team would like to stay for just a moment, we'd like to wish Ms. Biznick a very happy birthday with some cupcakes.